I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the time and the place for the August 5th regular board meeting of the Marshalltown School District. Welcome to all of you in our audience and welcome to those of you who will be viewing us on delayed broadcast. Allow me to introduce the few people that are at the table with me. Some are, gotta get those vacations in just before school starts. To my left, we have Karina Hernandez, Sean Heitman, and Ben Fletcher. At the center table with me, to my right, is Paulette Newbold, the Board Secretary. And to my left is Dr. Theran Schutte, the District Superintendent, and I am B. Niblock. We have a pink sheet for any of you who would like to address the Board. Please sign up and you will be allowed to speak after the consent agenda during public comment. You'll be given five minutes to speak, but according to Board policy, the Board cannot reply to your comments at this time. We thank you for your comments. Please read with me the mission of the Marshalltown Community School District. "We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences." And stand as you're able and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, universal, and just as for all."
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, there are. And personnel?
Yes. Not personnel. Personnel.
I apologize for these late additions. We're just getting some background checks in for some new hires and so we have some verbal additions. They are included in the personnel items document there and they are highlighted, the brand-new ones that were just added a couple hours ago. So I'd like to bring your attention, please, under the appointment section to 23 through 27. We've got Brandt Snakenberg coming in as the Work Experience Coordinator at the high school. We're pending that license. That should be coming shortly. Elizabeth Matthews will be Special Ed at Hoagland. Samantha Kolf, a fifth grade teacher at Lenahan. Bradley Davis, Special Ed at Fisher. And then Addison Glommen, Special Ed para at Lenahan. And then also, a couple change of contracts. Numbers five and six under change of contract. We've got Rosa Nivares, half Title I and half ESL at Woodbury. She was previously preschool at Woodbury. And then we also have Joanna Ruddick. She was also preschool at Woodbury and she's being moved to half second grade and half ESL, both of those at Woodbury.
Are both of those new positions?
No, they are not, I do not believe. I'm not 100% positive in that.
If they're not a new position, would you put in ideas that they're replacing?
Absolutely.
From now on, so that we can?
Definitely. Yes. And again, I apologize, this isn't ideal having to verbally add these, but due to the time of year, things are a little tight.
Time of year.
Alright, that's all. Would you like me to go in and change that?
Well, I see that you haven't, you've just indicated that they've moved from a position... Add another line that says where they're, you know, who they're replacing.
I will do that. Thank you.
Any other additions or corrections?
No.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second. Heitman Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries four zero. Mr. Potter.
Alright, we are excited to have Marsh Town High School junior, almost junior here in a few weeks, I guess, Abby Weldon, who returned from Paraguay as a U.S. Youth Ambassador. So we're really proud of the work she did this summer and she's gonna talk a little more about that, so go ahead.
Thank you. I'm really excited to talk to you guys. Thank you guys for having me. Just a little bit nervous. This is my first time presenting about this experience.
We're a small group tonight.
So, yeah, as Andrew said, my name's Abby Weldon. I'm going into my junior year here at the high school and I was a part of the Youth Ambassadors Program in Paraguay. The Youth Ambassadors Program is a State Department-funded cultural exchange program and it's aimed at promoting mutual understandings, increasing leadership skills, preparing youth to make a difference in their communities. So, in October, I applied for this program and the application process included roughly five essays, two letters of recommendation, I had to submit my grade reports, et cetera, et cetera. And from there, I was selected as a semifinalist in December. And once I was selected as a semifinalist, I had to interview in Spanish. And from then, I was selected as a finalist and I found out that I would be traveling to Paraguay. So, in Paraguay, the theme of the program was social entrepreneurship and multiculturalism. So while I was there, I engaged in workshops, team-building exercises, met with community leaders, gave and saw cultural presentations, stayed with the host family, and also got to visit the U.S. Embassy, meet the U.S. Ambassador there, and meet with diplomats in Paraguay. So, I'd also like to just touch on the fact that I grew up in the bilingual program at Woodbury Elementary School and I credit the bilingual program with this opportunity entirely because I started at Woodbury in kindergarten, not knowing any Spanish, hardly knowing how to say hola como estás. And I left fluent in Spanish and because of my experience there, I was able to go to Paraguay. So I credit it entirely. And moving forward, I would love to be a strong advocate for the program any way that I can because I see how it is beneficial to people of all different backgrounds, both intellectually and interpersonally. So I really like to put a lot of emphasis on that. I also have some pictures from Paraguay that I can show you. A large part of what we did was meeting with students in different schools in Paraguay. So, yikes, okay. In the top left, that's me shadowing at a school. And the school that I was shadowing at was a private international school. So all of those kids there were learning English and it was super fun to get a practice, for them to get to practice their English and for me to get to practice my Spanish with them. Super fun. And the two pictures in the middle are students who had scholarships to learn English through the U.S. Embassy. And then bottom right, I guess, yep, is me talking with elementary school students who were also learning English. Bottom left is the whole group giving a presentation to elementary school students about life in the United States. So, yeah, you can go to the next one. We also went and saw lots of different presentations, again, a big aspect of what we did there. That meant both going out to different areas in the community, different parts of Paraguay, and also going to different places of work. We did like a shadow day at Fundación Paraguaya, which was a foundation in Paraguay that works with a program called Poverty Stoplight, which we were heavily involved with while we were there. In the bottom right, I'm meeting with diplomats. This is my, some pictures from the day at the U.S. Embassy. We were given a presentation and then we were also able to meet the ambassador and kind of learn about what the United States does in Paraguay, our work there, how we're helping out. Super fun, super interesting day. Really opened up my eyes to international relations and how people in the United States play a part in that. We also had opportunities to do touristy stuff, which was super fun, traveling Ascension, visiting some landmarks with the group, and just seeing the sights was beautiful, amazing. And the people I met there, both the people that I traveled with and my host family and the Paraguayans, were all amazing. My favorite part of the experience by far was just the interpersonal, interpersonal experience that I had, meeting new people, just the most genuine, down-to-earth people, a great experience. So, those are some pictures. Do you guys have any questions?
So how did you find out about the opportunity to do that?
Well, I'm, I've been, I was looking into different State Department-funded programs to study abroad and tossing around some ideas, looking into going to Germany, different, so many different opportunities. But this one was super appealing to me because it was only a month. I didn't want to go away for an entire year. And also because it gave me an opportunity to use my Spanish. So I was super excited about that. But, yeah, just looking into different State Department-funded programs is how I found this.
Did they, I imagine your Spanish was part of the application process. Did they assign Paraguay to you or is that, was that known in prior time?
They gave us a preference box. I signed up for this, for South America as a whole, so they could send me to wherever in South America technically. My preference was actually Argentina, but very grateful that I gotta go to Paraguay. And I don't really know how they paired me up with Paraguay necessarily, but that's a whole part of their selection process, so, yeah.
You said that you had to write five essays?
Yes.
What were the topics of those?
Oh, gosh. One of them was, describe a time that you stood up for something that you believed in. Talking about my community service and my community outreach. Oh, my gosh, I can't think of them right now. Super...
Put them out of your mind as soon as you're done.
Yes, oh, my gosh. Super stressful, but, yeah, just kind of, a lot of them are just basic, like college-type applications, just generic questions. But, yeah.
So is this in your plans for after high school? What are you thinking?
I just wanna keep traveling. I have an itch that I need to scratch. I had an amazing experience. I'm already looking into the other State Department-funded programs. My time in high school's running out, though, so when I look into colleges, my opportunities to study abroad is definitely gonna be a big part in my, in where I apply.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. Thank you.
It's easy to see from your presentation how you're an outstanding ambassador for our district, community, and the state, so thank you for taking the time.
Thank you.
Very good.
Steve, if you'd like to come up. So, we've asked Coach Steve Hansen, former teacher as well, Marsh Town Community School District, to come before us. Steve, as you likely saw in the Times Republican article, retired after 26 years as the head coach at Marsh Town High School, has 567 wins, which is amazing number of wins, seven state tournament appearances, four state title games, and one championship. He's been inducted into the Iowa High School Baseball Coaches Association Hall of Fame in 2011 and retired from teaching in 2013. Basically, we want to thank you for all the blood, sweat, tears, time you've invested in Marsh Town's youth. We were talking a little bit before the meeting and having been a player in the program, I know that, I mean, our hopes are always that some, there'll be someone there to fill the shoes and maybe take you to the next level, but I truly feel like you're ending kind of a long, successful era of coaches, you know, dating back to Rick Matthews and then Bob Leach and Brad Clement and yourself. That spans quite a few, probably a person's lifetime, or pretty close to it. And I think the thing that all of your players understand, because I think all of you promoted the same types of expectations, although it felt like it was all about trying to be excellent as a baseball player and as a team, it was really about being excellent people and excellent employees and all of the things that, that you guys promoted, taught, the expectations, the accountability, it's all fully applicable to the workplace. And there's not a person that I know from before me or after me that doesn't feel strongly that having access to yourself as well as those other coaches that I mentioned position them for success in their adult life. So, want to thank you on behalf of the district for everything that you've done, not just the coaching, but the field preparation, the counseling, the holding kids accountable throughout the year to make sure they can play baseball, I mean, all those different things to go into, the parent engagement, the, you know, what people don't know is the amount of hours you guys have spent with the youth program, making sure that their work is aligned to ultimately what we've wanted the end product to be. And so, thank you very much for all of that.
You're very welcome. This is a tough act to follow. I'm not bilingual and I'm very old, you've established that, so, to be around this long. The baseball thing's really, like any extracurricular activity requires, it's, there are a lot of moving parts. And in baseball in particular, where you have to deal with a field, I'm always envious of wrestling coaches and basketball coaches and swimming coaches who don't have to do anything with the, with the facility. And so without, I'd mention Chuck, who's been very helpful in the years that he's been here, just to try to get some things accomplished on the field. And then, I'd be terribly remiss not to mention our, our support personnel, Chuck's staff that help us on a daily basis, our athletic director and Kate Lamb and the other athletic secretaries who have preceded her. You can't simply do it by yourself. And then in particular, obviously, our, our coaching staffs, which the past few years have been nearly exclusively all former Bobcat players. And that makes the continuity of what we're trying to do a lot easier and, and certainly the, you can't do anything without players. And we've had great fortune to have some really, really good baseball players, but I, almost to a guy, the great players are also the great people. And when you have that, if you're business people, if you have that, you can be successful no matter what you're doing. So, it's been a great situation and thank all you folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I bet.
Enjoy your retirement as long as that lasts.
Yeah, that's true. Never know. Thank you all. Thank you, John. Thank you for answering. Appreciate that.
Looking at the consent agenda, are there any additions or corrections from anyone on the minutes of July 15? The minutes of July 23rd? Any additional items of note and personnel?
And other than what was mentioned?
Looking at inter-agency agreements and contracts, we have a proposal from Houghton Mifflin-Harcourt for the purchase of materials for the Four Oaks students. We have a contract from the Iowa Department of Public Health to institute the Sexual Risk Avoidance Education Program. A grant from Iowa Mathematics and Science Education Partnership for the computer science at Lenahan. An agreement from BV for field experience opportunities. A contract from MTI Production for the license for the fall production of Disney's Little Mermaid. And total resource campaign contract renewals for the Chambers Banquet and the State of the School Luncheon. We have a contract for one Level One student to Bell Plain. Any questions about any of those? Looking at open enrollments, are there any questions? Any items of note and bills? Looking at donations, we have a donation list from Walmart stores across the state in the amount of almost $1,400 towards the Woodbury Playground build. We have a project research proposal. Any questions on any of those? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Fletcher Heitman, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries four zero.
Good evening. My name is Steve Hinderhoffer. I teach health education over at Miller Middle School. And just two parts tonight. One, just a thanks again for another great contract and just really appreciate being able to teach here at, at Marshalltown and at Miller. And I've had several friends ask me, are you ready to go back? I don't think any teacher's ready to go back. I think if you asked a business person or another person who doesn't teach, hey, if we gave you two months off and then said, do you want to go back to work, none of us would ever be ready. But at the same time, I think teachers are really excited to be back with, like, kids and the topics that they teach. And so I think a lot of us are really excited for that and will enjoy the last three weeks. So just on behalf of my wife and my three kids and just thank you again for, for letting me teach here. I appreciate that, so. On a separate issue, I, when I leave school, I get to be a father and I get to be a husband and I get to be a gardener and kind of a pretend animal raiser on some level. And, and we just, we love raising animals. We have chickens, pigs, turkeys. We even added a cow this year and, and a dog and a couple cats, so. But we're, we're just, I'm big into trying to use our, our food wisely. I came upon an article, this was in Mother Earth News about two months ago, and just reading from there, it says, "Food growers to grocers, companies to consumers, food waste is an issue that plagues the entire supply chain. Up to 40% of the U.S. food supply finds its way into landfills at great financial and environmental cost, while simultaneously 40 million Americans are food insecure. According to the EPA, we need multifaceted solutions to connect and correct those issues, with policymakers, businesses, and consumers all working to stem the flow of food waste from every angle." I, I get to do lunch, I get to do lunch duty at Miller. And one of the things that I've noticed, and this is not a referendum on the food program, so, our food program here at Marshalltown Community School District is amazing. I eat at school several times a month, especially when I forget my lunch at home on the way out. And it's, it really is a great program.
Is that by purpose?
Sometimes. I'm, I'm big on leftovers, so. But I just, at, at times when I do lunch, I see some of the things that are in the pictures there. And this maybe isn't something new where students will, will get a meal and then eat one or two bites and then toss it into the garbage. I've seen whole salads go into the garbage, closed containers of milk, just various different food items. And it's not because it isn't good. I just think, for some reason, I mean, statistics are, are there, like, we're just throwing food away. And fortunately, at our house, we have like these beautifully made animals that eat food really well, especially when it comes to pigs and chickens. So, I'd like to propose, just so you can visit in the future, I'd like to gather some food scraps, you know, we can make announcements to students, talk about food waste. I'll provide a means to transport that food, a specific location, specific days of the week. Could be leftover food from trays only. I wouldn't take anything from the school or anything that was in the back. It's just, if I can intercept from hand to trash can and intercept that, I think we can, we can do some neat things. And I'll get to that in just a minute. I'll bring the food waste and scraps to our, to our house in the, in the country, about 15 minutes north, and we'll feed those things to our pigs and chickens on the same day. Now, I am a, on that side of my life, I am a business person, so it's no lie that I'm looking to cut some feed costs. At the same token, I'm also like a service-oriented type of person. I like to be kind and, and I noticed that statistic is that people are food insecure. So, what I'd like to do is work something out. We would bring a hog to market, so for those of you that don't know, like, we'd bring a pig to the butcher. Wes Marshall has a USDA certified butcher and they would process the pig for us. We would take all that cost on and we would then, at some point, deliver that back to the school in some way. We could donate it to the school, we could donate it to a local food pantry. I know Miller has a beautiful food pantry where families come, there's a freezer down there. We can just put that, that hog into the freezer. We can donate to groups of house compassion. I'm sure there's local Lions, Kiwanis Salvation Army, et cetera. Again, it will cut my cost. It's gonna look good somewhere for, for you folks, I would think, whether that's the paper or the, whatever it happens to be. I think this would look good for everybody. I know there's a lot of like, I'm sure there's some red tape and yellow tape and green tape and probably some blue tape, too. You know, who gets the scraps and the waste? What if someone else wants it? Is it safe? Is there a conflict of interest? Probably so. I mean, I'm a teacher of the school and I'm looking to, to benefit myself. I'm sure there's something there. But I just, coming back to that last point, I know I'm short on time. You know, when the statistic says that 40% of food goes into the garbage and 40 million Americans are food insecure, I think that's something we can try to tackle here and I'd be open to just communicating about that in the future. So, thanks again. And if you ever want to come visit the farm, we're a mile south of Highway 96 and we're on 130th Street. We just had baby pigs, by accident. I know I'm a health teacher, so it wasn't by accident, that was more of a math issue. I miscalculated today. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, Steve, probably a good place to start the conversation after this is just to talk directly to Lynn Large. She might have knowledge on, you know, what kind of camp possibly...
I did take it to her first. And I've talked to Carlos Sperry at Miller and they've always been just so respectful and said, hey, you're probably gonna have to talk to the, the higher-ups on that.
Okay.
So that's kind of where I, I came to this particular part. And we can visit on the phone or email or whichever. I'm not looking to have it done tomorrow.
Yeah. I can touch base with Lynn and...
Yeah. So I just, I feel like there's a way to get it done and to do this right. And of course, there's gonna be something that goes wrong. That's just part of farming and, and the way things happen. But I think there's a lot of benefit, too, and I think it would look really good as well, so.
Thank you.
Would you like your pictures back?
Yeah, those are a nickel a piece of mine, so. Thank you.
Dr. Schutte, legislative priorities?
Yeah, so after the great conversation we had and suggestions that came from the Board when we introduced, reviewed our past priorities and introduced some ideas at the Board table, Janelle B. and I talked through and came upon what we think for the upcoming school year should be our legislative priorities. It was suggested that we return the school funding policy, which is pretty comprehensive and it addresses special ed as all the general fund budget. We felt strongly about keeping unfunded and underfunded mandates at the forefront, trying to, in hopes of encouraging the legislature not to mandate things that we don't have sufficient funding to implement. Mental health, which we've talked a lot about, with social-emotional learning in the past year. And this actually probably is one of the top items with the school districts across the state and obviously has received a lot of attention, both for adults as well as children. We would retain the English Language Learner Platform, looking for on-time funding as well as sufficient funding to support our students. This is a tough sell mainly because we're a bit of an anomaly with a high percentage of second language learners that we have, I think, third highest in number and third highest in percentage in the state. Many Iowa districts aren't contending with anything remotely close to that, so. But, this topic did have some legs last year with the legislature and I think they're gonna continue to push for either a longer duration of funding or a higher percentage of funding coming back to help support our English Language learners. And then, of course, keeping early literacy on the platform as well. We've listed these in priority orders, so I think we can only actually submit four to ASB for their consideration. We submit all five, but they'll probably only take the top four to collate it with the other priorities from other districts. The two things that fell off from last year's list were saved since that was reauthorized and extended. And then, we took the school calendar off there as well, even though this year, it'll be interesting to... weekend off, and going back to school on Monday. Many, like ourselves, are waiting till the 26th. There's been a couple different efforts to push the language for the start date to save the first Monday following the conclusion of the state fair, since the state fair was what was highly promoted as something that they wanted to protect by pushing the start date out later. But the other reality is that I think for every day that school is in session, when it otherwise would be summer vacation, it's at the tune of about $1 million a day to the Iowa tourism industry. So availability and accessibility to youth workers and things like that, and, and keeping places open that otherwise would have to shut down as a result of lack of workers makes a, has made a difference in their thoughts there. But, so, school calendar and SAVE were what dropped off the list.
I would suggest that you change the margins and the spacing to get it all on one page, so they would be less likely to cut anything off.
Yeah, I think we actually have to submit online, so we just, like, click boxes.
Could try to.
Yeah, you know, whatever. We can. Could I, if there are no questions, could I have a motion to approve the legislative priorities as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Heitman, Fletcher, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The motion carries 4-0.
Janelle B. and I also met on the superintendent and board goals for 2019, 2020. The superintendent evaluation, as well as the board's self-assessment, were utilized heavily in terms of helping guide and/or determine what the proposed goals are. For the board, the three key focal areas are student achievement, communication and visibility, and financial integrity of the district. For the superintendent, it very much mirrors that as well. Student achievement, district communications and marketing, financial stability of the district, and implementation and communication of the strategic plan.
See, we got that all on one page.
You did.
If you looked at this before the updated piece was put in, the changes that were made were under 1B for the board. We don't have a timeframe in there, like, quarterly, monthly, yearly. We just put in the word regular as a time, a space holder until central office staff needs. In the superintendent's goals, under 2A, we put marketing. We had originally aligned the plan. We clarified that with marketing plan. And under B, we had communication to the board on the marketing plan, and now it's communication through an update, just an update each month. Any questions on any of those goals, for the board or the superintendent?
I think it, I think it seems to be what we discussed.
Could I have a motion to approve the superintendent and board goals for the 2019-20 school year?
So moved.
Fletcher Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries 4-0. All that.
We just have a resolution for the board to approve, to tentatively, tentatively approve the inspecs form of contract for the security management system Phase III project, and to set the time, date, and location for the public hearing, which would be at the next board meeting on August 19th, I believe, and authorize us to post the notice for seeking competitive bids on said project.
And then, Shell, this is looking at further securing and/or adding more secured entry points for the schools. All of our schools have secured entries, so it's either further enhancing those entries, or adding another place where key entry is viable. Then it's also taking a look at security cameras at our elementary schools, particularly external, and further cameras at our secondary schools that could be internal and/or external.
Questions?
Yeah, I sent a very late email on this, so, sorry about that. But is, I mean, is there plans and specifications that have been reviewed by a committee, or what's, what's been put together so far?
Well, we have worked closely for a good part of the year with TSP, because this is really kind of a continuation of plans that they've had for quite some time. It's just further updated based on today's current reality. We have not taken it, taken it to facilities or finance, however, other than talking about earlier in the year, this being a priority based on partly the funding that we had available to us. It was one of the things on the plan that was within our fiscal capacity.
Okay.
Whereas most of the other projects would have cost more than we had immediately following the roundhouse completion.
It's probably been about a year ago that we had a plan come to us to change the entire front of the high school, and the entryway, and where the offices were, something on the back. And the board said, too much, not now. And so this is in place of that.
And this really, that was part of kind of an overall construction addition, which that was before my time. But this is really just enhancing further what we already have, and protecting our current assets with more ability to secure the facilities, particularly as it relates to monitoring and that sort of thing.
When it comes to the high school, would it be something where parents don't need to call and say, you know, open the door? Would this be like a security camera where they'll be able to see if somebody's in the door?
To answer your question, if the parents would have to call, or something like that, we have in place at a few of the schools where we have exterior cameras with an intercom system, where you can be let in by the school secretary. And what this project that we're looking at, what this will enhance, will be that ability to do that at, at all of the elementary schools, and then to, to play, to build upon some of the things that we've already initiated at the intermediate school, the middle school, and the high school. But the primary focus that, that we've talked about initially will be with the elementary schools.
In a perfect world, if we're able to move forward on all of it, would, would the high school have a different entry system? Because right now, as she was alluding to, it's kind of archaic with having to actually use your phone to call in.
Yes. What we would do would, we would put the exterior camera at the front door. And if, depending upon what we consider the front door, because the door facing to the west isn't necessarily the front door to most of the students. Door 10, which is close to the roundhouse, it's double doors that, that come in, that go up to where the SRO office was, but now it's going into Phase II. Also, a lot of the students will be coming in through the Phase II vestibule. So this would enhance that, so that there, it could be remotely accessed, remotely operated. So you didn't, you know, you could see it, you could see on a monitor, you could see who was at the door, identify themselves, and then it could be remotely let in.
I don't have a general problem with this. It sounds like a good thing to do, but I haven't seen the plans that were being asked to approve. Not sure I can approve them. I can't approve them.
Yes, no?
Is that a question?
Well, right, at the, I mean, at the current time, we're simply trying to go out to bid, but the board's ultimately going to decide once the bids come in whether or not to approve.
But we're going to send out a package of specs of what we're asking for, right? And that's what we're being asked to approve, is this is the package, this is what we're asking for. That, I mean, that's, that's what we're being asked to do, right? We're tentatively approve, we've set a public hearing to get public comment on the plan.
On our most recent timeline from TSP, they have completion of construction documents to 95% for August 19. So I assume those would be on the next board meeting, at the same time we do a public hearing.
So we, nor the public, will see the plans before we have a public hearing?
Not according to this schedule.
Well, then I agree with Ben. That's counterproductive.
We could certainly, assuming TSP is prepared for that, we could certainly schedule a facilities committee meeting prior to the next board meeting, run those plans by.
I think that if we're asking for public comment on the plans, and we don't get the plans until the meeting that we're asking them to come to, it's counterproductive for what we want to happen. I don't think that's being transparent.
So we could invite TSP to present the plan at the next board meeting, and then we just have to push everything out two weeks.
Right.
Which is not going to be a problem.
It's not going to happen before school starts anyway, so.
Oh, no. It's a lengthy project.
And most of this work will not be disruptive to the school environment, from what we've been told, so.
So we're moving this information that we're being asked to approve tonight to the first September meeting, which is Tuesday after the election, right?
Could we have the presentation at the next meeting, and have the resolution on that evening as well? Just a general presentation on the project.
Not if you want to do a public hearing.
Well, the public hearing would have-
We set the public hearing at one meeting for the next meeting.
Right. So we could vote, basically, we could vote on this the next meeting, set the public hearing the next meeting, and the public hearing would be in September.
If we have the, yeah.
So the public hearing would actually be in September.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll have, we'll have Dave, or whoever's representing TSP, present board facilities prior on the plans.
I need to look at those days that are available, which might not be very many.
I mean, and if it's, if it doesn't work out for the facilities committee, and as long as the information gets sent out, and they can, somebody can present something at the next full board meeting, I mean, if we make an attempt to go for facilities and it doesn't work out, I'm okay with that.
Moving on to policies. Looky there, 545, the word policies, N-D-O. Short things make me happy.
All right. So policies for first reading. We have not made any changes to these policies since the last meeting, when you saw them. For 100, we have deleted and amended in order to have closer compliance with ASB language. We infused our own language for mission and vision on that particular policy. You want to take them one at a time, or?
Well, 100 and 100E2 are both being amended, correct?
100, yes, E2.
So the-
Because of the number of changes that were made in it.
Right. So 100E2, formerly E, or what was E2, now will be E1.
E1.
Basically was placing our strategic goals within that document.
Because we will delete 100E1, correct?
Current 202.
The current.
Right, correct.
Okay.
And then-
So then we have a new 100E2.
Which is our one-page strategic plan.
Okay, so we'll amend. Now we'll have to adopt, so first.
Two, formerly 202.5, which will now be 202.3, Board of Directors' Conflict of Interest. We simply updated based on the law of the thresholds for determination of-
Can we mark that review?
You can mark, approve, and waive the second reading on that, since it's a legal change. 206.2 was a new policy outlining the role of the vice president. 501.5 was due to legal change. We've amended with some additional language regarding attendance, attendance center assignments. 505.5, graduation requirements. We made some adjustments based on some changes in law with financial literacy.
So we're amending that one as well.
Yep. And 603.1, basic instruction program, needed a lot of updates based on our current practice, and also the financial literacy requirement.
Okay. So let's take care of delete first. 100E1, current 100E1. I have a motion to delete.
So moved. Second.
Fletcher Heitman, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries. Current 100E1 is deleted. Then we have a new 100E2, and a new vice president policy, 206.2, to adopt. I have a motion to adopt, and waive the second reading.
So moved. Second.
Fletcher Heitman, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The motion carries 4-0. Now that leaves us with 100E2, which is now the new 100E1. 202.5, Board of Directors' Conflict of Interest, which is now a new 203. 501.5, Attendance Center. 505.5, graduation requirements. And 603.1, basic instruction program, to amend and waive the second reading. Did I say 100 as well? If I didn't add-
I think-
May I have a motion to amend those policies and waive the second reading?
So moved. Second.
Fletcher Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The motion carries 4-0. Now we're down to Karina's.
Okay, 100-1. I want-
Okay, 100-1. I want new number, so it would be only 100. Name changed to legal status of the school district and added wording due to ISB.
Yeah, this is strictly to align with ISB.
So that one will need to come back.
101.1, change number, number changed to 103. There's some changes to the top and the third paragraph.
Yeah, we tried to be more explicit to this being in large part in reference to the work of Saic and the Saic.
So that one will need to come back as well.
And then, 101.1R1, it's just a number change.
That I'd recommend we just mark as reviewed.
Mark as reviewed, okay.
And 100...
Am I? The early childhood progress.
Early childhood.
Yeah, with that, we simply made, in addition to a number change, we just changed the dates from January and May to January and June for those reports to be made.
Question, Sean?
Do we now have two policies numbered 100? District philosophy, mission, beliefs, and expectations, and legal status of the school district?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's a pretty good catch.
We'll just call it 100A and 100B.
We'll get that, we'll get that figured out for the next meeting. One of those is wrong.
The name of the school district is going to have to... That's probably why it was 100.1.
Maybe.
So maybe we're not going to make that new 100.
Yeah.
But it's coming back anyway, so the philosophy and two exhibits will have to stay 100.
And is the change from, and then that, the early childhood progress one, is that just because that's when the information's available or?
Yes.
Okay. And that's just, I don't know about everybody else's screen, but whenever I look at this one, it's got a equal sign instead of a apostrophe and child's. I don't know if it looks like I'm bad on everybody's or that's just the program I'm using to look at it.
Yeah, I want to fix that.
It's going to come back.
I'm missing it.
So we've got 100.1 or 100, whatever we number that one, 103 and 103R2 that are coming back. Other questions or items of note on those? No committee reports. Nobody's met since last we met. What have we done tonight to improve the education for Marshalltown Community School District children?
Hired a bunch of people.
Thoughts?
Good to hear one more success story out of that bilingual program.
Mm-hmm.
Imagine, she said that was the first time she's talked about that presentation. I imagine there'll be any more chances for her to talk about it.
Have an opportunity to do that. Good rep for us. And we're on our way to a security system. We're just in a different place than we thought we were. My quote for this evening comes from Winston Churchill. "It's no use saying you are doing your best. You have got to do what's necessary." I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Fletcher Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. We are adjourned before 6:00.